Muscatine City Council will come to order. Fran, would you do a roll call, please?
I was members Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natfig.
Present.
Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
All present, your honor.
Very good, Fran. Thank you. Folks, would you rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Under item number four, communications from citizens, Mr. Gary Carlson is with us tonight with HNI, and he's going to bring us up to date on a big project they have going on.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Excited to be here, and City Engineer Jim Edgemont, with all of his technical skills, is going to manage to move the slides around, so if he makes a mistake, we can all laugh at him. So what I'm going to update you on today is continuing investment by HNI in our downtown campus. So the slide that I have up on the screen, and you have also in front of you, is what I presented to you back in 2012, when we started this plan. So we said back then, we had multiple phases, and Phase One, so this is what our campus looked like in 2012. And this area, in this back area, I have a little problem getting the flick to show there, where it showed, it's a parking lot in the back kind of right side, okay? That's what it looked like in 2012, was the parking lot. And our Phase One was to build the new Oak laminate facility on that parking lot. And in addition to the building and the landscaping that we did along that area, then we purchased a lot of new equipment, can you see it right there? Can you see that green? I finally got it there. Purchased a lot of new equipment, and we're able to transfer our people that had been working more in these two facilities into the new facility. The new facility is also temperature controlled, new restrooms, new locker rooms, new cafeteria, much, much more desirable work location for our people, which is another tremendous added benefit. Most importantly, it increased our capability and our capacity, so it has met our expectations, and we now believe we're the largest producer of laminate office furniture in the world. As we have continued to do this, we have always done this move with balancing meeting our customers' expectation, right? So this is remodeling while you're still living in the house, okay? So there are some inherent challenges that come with that, but our members have done a fantastic job. We manufacture then on this side of the street, and then, as you all know, we transfer product from manufacturing over to this side of the street, and it goes into our central region distribution center. And everybody knows how beautiful that overpass is that periodically gets hit by some kind of vehicle, okay? I've been down there more times than I want to admit to tell somebody to let the air out of their tires so they can back out. But we, so this is the campus. As you know, we pride ourselves in taking good care of our campus and with the landscaping and how we have worked to repaint our buildings and badge our buildings. So we move forward, a slide. We'll start to look at what we are going, what our intent is for that area to look at. So that white building, oh, Jim, I'm sorry, I should have gone back one. All right, this building, this building with the white siding, that building is well over 100 years old, and it's been a very challenging building for us for a long time, because the upper floors have had weight limitations, and we have not been able to have manufacturing equipment up there. We have had people could be up there, we've had some meeting rooms up there, but it is really not to the capacity level we wanted. By building the new building, that's why we were able to accomplish the capacity increase. This building will be taken down, which is one of the reasons I'm also coming to you today. The last week you talked, you approved that we would have some lane closures and street closures periodically over the next six weeks. But I also want to give you that update, because once that building starts coming down, that's when people will really notice, which is why I'm also here tonight, because it will become more visible when that happens. When we get done taking that building down, and we have the equipment out of it already, then, Jim, I think I can handle this. All right, then, this is what we intend this to look like. So that conveyor that you see going over Second Street today is really much, much longer than it appears, because you only see the part that crosses the street. That conveyor really is much longer going to our manufacturing and much longer on the other side as it goes into our central region distribution. So I'm going to go back again for just a second. So this red building here, that's in the back, with the kind of shuttered windows, we will be rejuvenating that building, and we will be putting this glass front on that building, and we will be putting this new conveyor system. So we will actually be installing a new conveyor system. So we will keep the old one, so we can keep doing manufacturing while we construct this one. And then when we get this one installed, then we'll switch over and we will take down the old conveyor. This new conveyor will be glass enclosed, it will function much like the current conveyor. In other words, you will see, however, you will see product moving across on the conveyor. And you will also see people walking, because that's how our people are, connect to the two buildings. The difference is that this one will be 10 feet higher in the air, okay? Which we think will make a dramatic difference as people come down the corridor. And when that building, the building we take down, will become a parking area and landscape area. So another view is how this would look if you're coming down Second Street. This would be coming like from the HNI headquarters or from downtown going down this way. That's what that will look like, and that's the conveyor. So as we think about the landscaping that we will be doing on our property, and we think about how that gateway comes down into the Mississippi Drive corridor, we think it's really going to complement the work that city and the community are doing on the corridor, and will also enhance the area that we have. This building will then become more of a product development, R&amp;D center administrative location for us. So we will be completely redoing this building from top to bottom as well, including doing some work to raise it up, the floor higher than the floodplain, okay? Or the 500-year floodplain, okay? Make no mistake, our continued investment in this whole downtown area goes back to decisions this council, maybe only Phil still on the council going back that far, was also an investment in the Mad Creek project, which raised the flood protection so that we can continue. All total, when you look from the 2012, Phase One, Phase Two, we have a Phase Three plan. This is about a $40 million investment into the downtown, and is also keeping 180 to 220 people just in that location, continuing to work in the downtown. So we're pleased, this is how it will look like as the cars drive under it, and you should see the landscaping and see the facing on the building. So I just wanted to give you an update, so when the building starts to come down, you know what we have planned to do. We are constantly balancing this project with production needs. We are balancing, and once we start to take down, it's pretty hard to stop taking down. The speed of which we get all of this done will be, you know, balanced with what our production needs are, what our order needs are, and just kind of the state of the business. But, you know, our, in a perfect world, this is a 2016 finished project. Don't ask me which month in 2016 yet, but this is a 2016 project. But we think it's a tremendous investment into the companies, a tremendous investment into our continued product development. Because the heartbeat of our company, like most companies, is the constant development of new products that meet the needs of your customers. And this is going to facilitate our product development, we believe, on a rather dramatic scale. So be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
How old is the, how old is the red building? Because both of them, I thought, were about the same.
My best memory is it's well into 100 years old as well. I think, it seems like most things we own.
It's in better shape, though, than the.
It is clearly in better shape, yeah. And we had equipment there. So the equipment will be moving in for some of our product development, it's pretty heavy duty equipment as well. So we have, we do have some concrete work that we'll be doing, especially on the first floor, for some additional support, as well as raising that up for the floodplain, and that will also make that more robust. But as you go up higher in the building, that'll be more, it'll be more people there working in development work. But when you walk into our development center, it is very much a working center. So as you go into that area, you'll be able to see product testing, and we also think that's really, that's good for customers when they come to Muscatine. We bring lots and lots of customers here, and so they can see our whole product development process, they see our testing process, they see our R&amp;D work, and then they see how that flows seamlessly into our manufacturing environment.
Gary, with the increase of workspace, you'll probably be increasing the employee base?
Bob, probably not, okay? And the reason I say that is because a lot of the investments that we have put, that we'll put in product development, we employ a lot of those people in different locations around town today. So I'm not anticipating huge growth in product development. We'll have some natural organic growth, but not big numbers. And in the Oak laminate, we have, we have added a lot of robotics to eliminate a lot of the physical lifting that a lot of our people had to do in the past, or movement of products with forklifts and pallet jacks and that type of thing. So actually, if our production level had stayed the same when we made this investment as it was, we probably would have had a reduction in headcount. But because of our increase in capability and our increase in product development, we now have stayed the same, we grew slightly. But it's because volume overall has grown. But that's a great question, Bob.
It's not a question, but just to comment, it's gratifying to see HNI make this investment here in Muscatine.
Well, thanks, yeah. We appreciate it. And Muscatine is obviously a, you know, critical community to us. Now, you know, our founding here and our headquarters here and the, and the fine group of members that we have assembled that work for us, many, you know, are in second and third generation families, which we're very proud of.
Gary, also not a question, but this would create a great picture into downtown Muscatine.
Well, we believe it, and we believe it does too, Mayor. And, you know, we're, we are invested in this community, and we are investment in this downtown area, because we believe the downtown really is the heart of a community. If you look at most successful communities, and I'm talking about even successful communities in Iowa, I mean, I think you could say this nationally, but especially in Iowa, they have a healthy downtown. They have a downtown that looks good. They have a downtown where people want to go where it's a gathering spot. We have a lot of positives in the downtown area. Our employment, Stanley Consultants employment, you know, the banks, a lot of the professional services. We have niche retail. It's become a very big restaurant entertainment center as far as bringing people in. So do we have more things to do? Well, you guys know, you know, you know for sure we have more to do. The community knows we have more to do, but I think as we all work together in step fashion, that we will have an area that we're all going to be really, really proud of.
Anyone else, Council? Very good. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Moving right along, is there anyone in council chambers that has an issue or an item you'd like to discuss with council that is not included on tonight's agenda? Now would be the time to come to the lectern. What's your name and address? Very good. We'll move on to item five, the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A, items 8A through D, items 9A through C, item 12A through B, and tonight's bill's totaling $1,449,555.33. Looking for a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Sharon. And Bob, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, now we're going to drop down to item 11, 11A. This should be from the city administrator. Presented for city council's consideration is the second. In final reading of an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance for the 2107 Grandview Avenue, formerly the Lamp Light Inn. The property owners have submitted a request to rezone a four-acre partial at this address from M1 Light Industrial to RR Multifamily Residential to allow for the conversion of the former Lamp Light Inn into one-bedroom apartments. Staff is recommending city council waive the rules and adopt this ordinance on final reading. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented and direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved.
Give that to Scott. Second?
Second.
Second. Mike, any discussion? This is a roll call, beginning with Scott.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Project. The City of Muscatine received and accepted a grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority to complete this project. HBK Engineering has completed the design of the project and is ready to move the project forward. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will take place on Thursday, October 15th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Osama?
Second.
Tom, I believe. Any discussion? Beginning with Osama, another roll call.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution awarding the contract for the runway renovation project at the municipal airport. Seven bids were received with a low bid from Manats of Brooklyn, Iowa in the amount of $3,985,699.84. The local share for this project will be $416,347.31, and will be funded from the 2016 bond issue. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second.
And a second, Bob, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
You bet.
Several, I don't know, months ago, I guess, I mentioned my concern of exactly how long is the airport going to be shut down when they do the cross? And is there something in the contract that speaks to that issue?
In the, in the agreement, they do have a timeline. They have 120 working days to complete the project from start to finish. The project's in three phases, 80 days for the first phase, 20 days for the following two phases each. The runway, the main runway will be shut down for the entire extent of the project, but the runway will remain open the entire time using the Crosswind runway. We'll have a temporary access to the Crosswind runway throughout the entire extent of the project.
Even when they're paving across?
Yep. In our FAA grant, they are paying for a temporary access road to be built while that intersection is being worked on, so that planes can still access the Crosswind runway.
They don't need any more space than that to land or take off?
For, for the majority of the planes that utilize our airport, the Crosswind runway will suit. Other plans are, we're working with and making arrangements during, during that period.
Because when the actual intersection is, is poured, they'll have, somebody, some of the planes will have to make other arrangements.
Yep, yep. So the largest plane, we've been working with them on making arrangements during construction.
So is there anything in the contract that says it can be closed for X days or not?
The intersection will be closed for 20 working days.
20 working days? A month?
Yep.
Total.
Total. Total.
How long does it take to cure?
Seven days or less.
Depends on the mix.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone else, Council?
Who's got the big plane?
Thanks, Adam.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and discussion is concluded. So this is a roll call, beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item D. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement with Union Tank Car Company, including annual appropriation tax increment payments not to exceed $45,000. The city is proposing to enter into an agreement with Union Tank Car Company in connection with the expansion of the company's coating and repair shop facilities, operations, and workforce in the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. This, the agreement will provide financial incentives to the company in the form of annual appropriation incremental property tax payments in an amount not to exceed $45,000. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, October 15th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Jeanette?
Second.
Second, Osama, any discussion? And this also is a roll call, beginning with Scott.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to issue a purchase order for a push-button activated crosswalk system. The trail crossing on Colorado Street is the major pedestrian crossing on that street. The newly paved street is almost double the width of the old street, and the trail is seeing an increase in pedestrian traffic. The traffic committee is recommending enhancements be added to the usual crossing signage. Staff is recommending the installation of a solar-powered rapid flashing beacon, or RFB. City staff will install and maintain the lights. Staff is requesting city council authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Tapco in the amount of $6,925 for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second.
Second. Jeanette, any discussion?
Just a question. I don't recall this being budgeted. What's the source of funding?
The source of funding, Tom, is the Colorado Street project. We'll charge this onto that.
Was part of the project originally?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other discussion? This is a voice vote, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven to zero. Item F. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve an agreement for compost grinding services. Three bids were received. The low bid was from Mulchscapers LLC in the amount of $8,928 for 24 hours and $375 per hour. However, staff is recommending acceptance of the bid from Midland Davis in the amount of $11,625 for 24 hours and $485 per hour. Midland Davis' equipment will allow them to come onsite and grind the current wood pile in 40 hours or less with their equipment, compared to the estimated 80 hours that would be needed with the equipment used by Mulchscapers. The agreement with Midland Davis would be for one year with provisions for extensions or up to two additional years. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Scott?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Phil, any discussion?
What's the investment of such equipment to do with ourselves down the road?
Want to step up? Well, Laura stepped up, but she took a look at this previously, and it was quite substantial.
Well, the maintenance on the equipment is a little on the high side, too.
Depending on the type of grinder we are looking at, the type of grinder that Midland Davis is going to bring in is anywhere from $500,000 to about $700,000 to purchase. The maintenance on that one blade alone is several hundred dollars. So it is a very large investment.
Yeah, answered my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, Council? All right, thanks, Laura. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven to zero. Item G. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve an agreement for the design of the HVAC system and replacement windows at the Muscatine Art Center. AJ Associates has provided the city with a proposal for professional, for a professional services agreement for the design of the geothermal HVAC upgrade at the art center and museum. Their design fee is equal to 9% of construction costs. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Osama, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven to zero. Item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a professional services agreement with Anderson Bogart. The firm will provide the required professional services to observe construction of the reconstruct runway 624 and associated taxiways project in an amount not to exceed $130,538.55. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted? Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
I heard Jeanette over there and Scott, you went to second, any discussion?
Were they involved in the fire station too, building?
No, these have been our historic airport engineering firm.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven to zero. Okay, and we are down to item 14, communication from council members, beginning with Councilman Raywall.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
I have nothing, thank you, Mayor.
I have nothing, thank you.
Bob?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Jeanette?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
I do have something.
All right.
Okay. Next week, I understand there will be a presentation during the in-depth session to cover this in more detail, but I became aware of an opportunity to apply for a grant through the Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines. To that end, city staff has been very helpful and has submitted an application and the city of Muscatine is one of four finalists for a rural development award. It's a $15,000 cash grant. We featured our forgivable loan program as, as the project that we wanted to, to provide as an incentive for this. And my thought is that $15,000 more we can put into the revolving, into the forgivable loan program. So what will happen is in the next week or two, there will be quite a bit of media about voting in support of this because the final step is the community showing support for the project. So to get the grant, people will have the opportunity to go online and vote and say, yes, we think this is a great thing. So you'll hear more about it and the community at large will be asked to participate and vote, so please stay tuned and please vote yes.
Can we have the people from Illinois to vote as well? Go and they, they can vote wise there, don't they?
That's right. Yeah, vote and vote often, right. Right.
You're not running, are you?
No, I'm not.
No. That's all I have, thank you.
Very good. Greg?
That is a good question though, and can you, like the Wellmark grant, vote daily or is this a one-time vote? Do you know the answer to that? Let's make sure we include that in the information. So the chambers sent some information out in their, in their email blast today, there'll be additional email coming out and reminders to, to vote for both this project and to continue voting for the Wellmark Trail Grant project. And with that one, you can vote and vote often and vote daily, please do so. And we'll find out about the Strong Communities Grant as well. But it also features the, the loan program. It's a combination of the loan and the forgivable loan program and the loan program that the three community banks have gone together and updated as well. So it's a great program and there will be, we weren't planning to put it on the in-depth session, but we could, we were going to put a, there'll be an, an article explaining the two programs again and some of the success stories that come with it as well. That'll be out there. Healthy Living Fest is Friday, the city will have a tent down on the riverfront, they'll be there and able to talk about the Mississippi Drive corridor project. You have the budget basis financial statements in front of you that will be reviewed at the in-depth meeting next week. It's, it's great news and we'll be looking forward to sharing that information, so.
Okay, grant.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, and I have one item, the chief of police has asked me to share with you folks some information. The Public Safety Open House is October 11th from noon to 3:00. That's the Public Safety Open House, October 11th, noon to 3:00. Councils, any of their business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm sorry. I was cutting.
So moved.
So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved.